Good afternoon and welcome to today's Pittsburgh City Council Cable Cast Post Agenda on Increasing the Affordability, Attainability, and Abundance of Housing in the City of Pittsburgh. Today, Wednesday, May 15, 2004. For the record, we are joined right now by council members Lavelle, Councilman Charlin, and Councilman Cockhill. Thank you for coming. I want to thank all the folks in the gallery who came today. I know this is a very important issue for Pittsburghers from all walks of life and every single corner of the city. And you know, I really also want to give a shout out to Pro Housing Pittsburgh for their partnership and helping make this happen as well. You know, as a candidate and now as a member of council, besides public safety, the issue that comes up over and over again is the issue of housing, you know, and how can we ensure that we can, you know, try to stem this ever-increasing cost of housing that we have in the city of Pittsburgh and ensure folks from all income levels and all walks of life, you know, can live in dignity and continue to live in the city. We know since the past census, we lost a considerable number of African-American residents from the city, and that's directly tied to the cost of housing and the housing options, you know, as well as my good friend Councilman Cockhill has been working a lot on the issue of the unhoused. And you know, all of these issues are part of a larger challenge that our housing ecosystem is facing. And we have a really, really amazing panel today. Yeah, I'm really excited. Before we go into opening remarks, to say we're ever joined by Shane Phillips, who came all the way from the great city of Los Angeles. We have Tammy Thompson from Catapult. We have Kiana Wassler, the Chief Housing Officer at the URA. We have Tina Daniels from Concrete Roads Construction, and Diamante Walker from Pittsburgh Scholar House. So I'm really here to listen to this brilliance. You know, that's to my left. So we're going to start off with a brief presentation from Shane Phillips, who I really had the great privilege to meet yesterday. I feel like I've known you for about a year and a half now. As a candidate, you know, my background is in civic engagement and sustainability. So I knew very little about community development and housing. And on the campaign trail, it came up over and over again. I was like, I need to educate myself. So I got on the Google machine and typed in New York Times bestsellers on urban planning and housing. And the first book that came up was Shane Phillips' book, The Affordable City. And it really, to me, was a masterclass for novices to really understand all of the dynamics that go into the housing crisis that's not only being felt here in Pittsburgh, you know, but around the country. And one thing I really, you know, appreciated about your book, Shane, you know, is that in many ways, for most people around the country, your book is kind of a window into the future. Because I think California is ground zero, you know, a state, you know, where you have cities where the median home price is $1.3 million in some cities. And all the challenges when you talk about, you know, LA, San Francisco, San Jose, and some of the other cities, you know, we can kind of peer into the future and see if we don't make changes, you know, what, you know, every city may be like 15, 20, 30 years from now. So, you know, without any further ado, I'm going to, you know, pass the baton to Shane Phillips to give a brief presentation. And we'll have opening remarks from all of our panelists and then open it up for question and answers from my colleagues.
Well, thank you, Councilman Mosley. And it's ironic that my book came up because it was not a New York Times bestseller. It's done okay.
Okay. Well, it should be.
I'm glad it showed up. I'll take the plaudits. I'm actually, I'm realizing, because we're on Zoom, I don't want like all my notes to be showing up here on top of. Maybe we can pause just for a second and figure out how to resolve that. I apologize for not checking into this before.
Yeah, no problem.
I really do need to stick to the notes, though, because I will go way over otherwise.
Okay, no problem, no problem, no problem. Do you want me to maybe start with Tina and just do some opening remarks while you?
Yeah, absolutely.
So we're just introducing ourselves?
Yeah, you can introduce yourself and talk, you know, a bit about, you know, what you do and kind of where you're, where you sit and kind of the affordability, attainability ecosystem as a, as what we call a mission-driven developer.
Okay. So my name is Tina Daniels, owner of Concrete Roads Construction and WNT Daniels Development Group. We are residential builders here in the city with a focus on affordable housing. One of our first developments we're doing is on Bennett Street in Homewood. We're wrapping that up in the next week or so. It's four, three bedroom apartments. We chose to focus on affordable housing because I'm a resident here, born and raised in the city of Pittsburgh. And as I realized that there's this great resurgence of our city happening, I wanted to be a part of the residents that have been here the whole time, being able to take part and enjoy that also. So we, we make sure to focus on not just providing affordable housing, but above standard affordable housing. So we just, we, our mission focused on providing beautiful structures for people to reside in, because I do believe that does something for your soul. But we also partner with great organizations like Pittsburgh Scholar House and Catapult to, for the wraparound support services that is a part of the total package of helping people to thrive and also have affordable housing, but then to helping people to do well in all aspects of their, you know, goals.
And Diamante Walker from Pittsburgh Scholar House.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. Dr. Diamante Walker with the Pittsburgh Scholar House. And I formerly had the esteemed privilege of serving as the Deputy Executive Director of the Urban Redevelopment Authority. So it's wonderful to be back here again after some time. You know, the Pittsburgh Scholar House, our mission is to work with highly motivated, single parents who are earning a two-year or four-year degree while they're raising their children. And our goal is to provide them with all of the socioeconomic supports that are necessary to achieve that goal. Because our principle is that we want economic autonomy and reduce dependence on subsidy over time, so that these families are thriving. And we're seeing that two-generational success. But we have to meet people where they are. And so, you know, we think of this affordable housing in terms of economic mobility housing. I think that when we scratch the surface of our affordable housing issue, we find a wage issue, a wage suppression issue. And when we scratch that wage suppression issue, we find economic disparities as it relates to higher educational attainment and post-secondary educational attainment. So one of the things that I am hoping for for Pittsburgh is that the same way that we approach the choice neighborhood, and we do that very strategically and very thoughtfully in a very highly coordinated manner, I would hope that as we think about the affordable city, we also think about how to become a choice city for everybody and provide housing options along the economic strata. Thank you.
And Kiana Wassler, Chief Housing Officer for the Urban Redevelopment Authority.
Thank you, Councilmember Mosley. And I just want to thank you for having me here today for this very important discussion. I also want to acknowledge the peers that I am sitting beside. I am thankful to have the, these beautiful women next to me, working together towards the, the goals and the issues of around affordable housing in the city of Pittsburgh. I am Kiana Wassler, Chief Housing Officer at the URA, the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh, excuse me, or URA. And the URA is the Economic Development Agency for the city of Pittsburgh. My goal and through the Housing Department, what we work on is making sure that developers who are looking to do projects in the city for housing development, whether it's for rental development or for sale, that they are including and considering the most vulnerable residents of the city. The funds, the public funds that we offer do require affordability in the developments that we fund. And so it's our, it's our duty to make sure that we're kind of making sure, underwriting these projects, making sure they're meeting guidelines, and making sure affordability is included, and our tenants are benefiting from that. Thank you for having me.
And I want to acknowledge, we're now joined by Councilwoman Deb Gross from District 7. Thank you for joining us. And I want to introduce Tammy Thompson from Catapult Pittsburgh.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Councilman Mosley, for inviting me. And I have to echo, I've been blessed to have the opportunity to work with these incredibly brilliant women looking for solutions to our housing challenges that we have, particularly in the communities that we serve. I am Tammy Thompson. I'm the Executive Director of Catapult Greater Pittsburgh. And one of the primary missions for us has been creating intentional opportunities for ownership for Black families in the city. And affordable ownership opportunities are extremely important. And I think it's something that has not had as much motion. I don't think we talk about affordable ownership opportunities as much as we should. And Catapult has been hyper-focused on breaking down barriers and obstacles for homeownership for our families. We've done that through education, advocacy, and intentional opportunity creation. An example would be creating our own down payment and closing costs assistance program, partnering with Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency to help pilot an affordable mortgage product that is geared towards increasing Black homeownership in this city. So I'm excited for the conversation. I have read this book, and I also agree, it is, it's a great resource for those of us who are looking to find solutions to make sure our, our families, our most vulnerable populations of families can remain in the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you, Tammy. And now I'm going to hand it over to Shane Phillips, the author of The Affordable, the author of The Affordable City and a man who wears many hats. And thank you for coming all the way from Los Angeles here to join us here in Pittsburgh.
Thank you again. And yeah, I feel like I'm living in the future here with my two computers. We're going to be a little awkward, but we're going to make it work. So just a little bit more background about me. I've been at UCLA for almost five years. I managed the Housing Initiative within the Lewis Center for Regional Policy Studies. Within the Housing Initiative, we're laser-focused on housing affordability, both kind of pure university research, but also a lot of policy work and analysis, and really advocacy as well. A real emphasis for me in my work has been translating what is being learned, what is already known in academia, to a broader audience of non-academics, non-experts. And I just want to pitch our podcast that we've been producing for the past three years as one resource for anyone who wants to kind of dig into any of these topics further. We've got something like 70-plus hours of content on there now. And the whole goal is to bring this stuff to a wider audience. So I will jump right in here. And I'm going to start this presentation the same way I opened my book, which is with a case study on a proposed development from around 2016 back in Los Angeles. It's the one pictured here. It goes by the name of Yucca Argyle, and it's in Hollywood, just a block or two from Hollywood Boulevard. The proposed project was 200 new units, including 40 for low-income households. And it was being built on privately-owned land with private funding, no public subsidies. At the time, a market rate one-bedroom unit in this building, or any building like it, would probably rent for around $2,500 a month. But those 40 income-restricted units would rent for closer to $800 or $1,000 a month, depending on their size. So it's a really, really big discount. The low-income unit rents are a good deal, really even compared to many of the 50, 70, 90-year-old apartment buildings in Hollywood, where units might rent for $1,200 or $1,500 a month at that time. And this rent comparison is important because the tower project here would be replacing one of those older buildings, a two-story, 40-unit, rent-stabilized building built in 1953. So if you were to look at this project from a high level, I think this is, this is just objectively a good trade. You're taking 40 rent-stabilized units, where rents vary anywhere from $700 at the low end to $1,800 or more at the high end, and you're replacing them one-for-one with 40 income-restricted units renting for under $1,000 a month. Those units would be deed-restricted, remaining affordable for at least 55 years, whereas rent-stabilized units revert to market rate in between tenancies. On top of all that, you're getting 160 market-rate units, which help absorb growing demand, stabilize neighborhood rents, they're higher quality than the previous building, and adding density just a couple blocks from a subway station, they're creating new tax revenues, and so on. Despite those clear benefits, the people who lived in the 1953 apartment building organized to oppose the redevelopment. And I didn't fully understand this at the time, I'm kind of ashamed to admit it. But the case bothered me for a while. And I later came to realize that my problem at the time, what I was not understanding, was I was only looking at the big picture. And I'd lost sight of the individuals involved. So yes, we were getting housing that we needed. And yes, the older housing would be replaced with better and more affordable housing. But the current tenants would not be the ones to benefit from that. Some earned too much to qualify for the new low-income units, some earned too little. And even those whose income fell within that right range, that sweet spot, they would end up competing with hundreds and probably more than 1,000 other applicants in a lottery for those 40 units. The net effect of this project would be positive. The benefits would outweigh the costs, I think. But those costs would be concentrated among a small number of renters, some of whom had been in their units for over a decade and lived on fixed incomes. They would be evicted, and their lives would be made worse for the benefit of other people. Faced with that reality, I think, of course, they would protest that development. And I think if, if we were in the same shoes, we probably would as well. I know I would. I'm not going to take any more time getting into the resolution to this story, except to say that it did reach a reasonable compromise. But, you know, why bring this up at all? I share this story because I think that for those of us who work on housing affordability, on development, on tenants' rights, and any related topic, whether professionally or as advocates, this helps illustrate why we seem to end up on opposite sides of policy debates with people who share so many of the same values and priorities. It comes down to where we focus our attention. And I think all of us would be served well by balancing our attention on both the regional and the individual impact. In practice, I think that for one reason or another, we often end up being categorized as either pro-housing or pro-tenant. And if you identify with one, it's interpreted as opposition to the other. If you're pro-housing, then you must be anti-tenant. If you're a pro-tenant, then you must be anti-housing, anti-development. The realization that I came to, and really the motivation for writing this book, is that these positions are not actually contradictory. We can be pro-housing and pro-tenant. And I think we should be because looking at the world through both of those lenses, taking seriously questions of who benefits, but also who is harmed in the face of proposed changes and the status quo, is our best shot at building a future that works for everyone. Being pro-tenant and pro-housing is important, I think, certainly in my view. But it doesn't really capture all of the different groups that we want to serve with better housing policy. And maybe more importantly, it doesn't really tell us anything about what to do. For that, a framework that has served me pretty well over the past four or five years is the three S's of supply, stability, and subsidy. This can really boil down to building enough housing for all types, of all types and for all types of people, establishing protections that give folks a meaningful level of housing security, whether they rent or own, and whether they live in single-family housing, multifamily, or any other kind of housing, and providing adequate funding to help those who lack the resources to afford housing on their own. I endorse all of these priorities together for two reasons. First is because we need policies and programs and built environments that meet a wide array of needs, both because household A is different from household B, and because household A today is different from household A in two, or five, or 20 years. Second is because each of these policy priorities, supply, stability, and subsidy, can be mutually reinforcing, with the strengths of one making up for the shortcomings of others. I'll quickly dig in on the three S's here a bit further, starting with supply. So fundamentally, making housing supply a priority is about acknowledging that we live in a world of physical and economic constraints. First, we have the physical constraint, that a growing, aging, changing population requires a growing and changing stock of homes. We have a very real inequality problem in the US, and I think it's important to acknowledge, and it extends to housing as well. But you can't redistribute your way out of a shortage. Subsidies are far, far more effective at addressing inequality, both in how we tax and how we spend. There's the related economic reality that when housing is scarce, homeowners and landlords gain a lot of market power. And that market power takes the form of higher rents and home prices. And that ultimately comes at the expense of homebuyers and renters. Rather than building wealth by growing businesses, improving our infrastructure, and things of that nature, this imbalance ends up transferring wealth from those with less to those who already have more. As a researcher, I really do my best to accommodate different interpretations of research, because this is all complicated stuff. And how you design a study really can skew the results that you come away with. But within the world of housing research, there is almost nothing I can say with more confidence than if you have two cities with similar demand, the one that builds more will end up more affordable over the long term, or even medium term. Moving on to stability, once again, this is about providing a sense of security and predictability. And it can include protecting deed-restricted and otherwise low-cost housing, too. But I think, I like to compare this to supply in a more philosophical way. And so if supply is about acknowledging economic and physical constraints in a housing market, then stability, to me, is about acknowledging that we also have moral obligations. It's about asking what level of security, and the word you use, Councilmember Mosley, dignity, even the least of us deserves in our housing situation. In most jurisdictions, almost any kind of tenant protection has historically been considered off-limits. Our response to people who want housing security has essentially been to buy a home. I think this was always wrong, in my view, because there have always been a class of people, and that is very heavily inflected by race, for whom homeownership was just not a viable option, through no fault of their own. But if that position was not defensible, say, 50 years ago, when the cost of a home was one or two times the average person's salary, it certainly is not defensible now, when that price-to-income ratio in most cities is over four or five. In my home of Los Angeles, it's somewhere between 10 and 12. Finally, again, subsidy is about public spending and how we use it to fill gaps. And that supply and stability don't fully address. It's about acknowledging that as important as supply is for affordability at the market level, some people will never be able to afford housing on the open market. And that while regulations serve important purposes, there is a point beyond which they will do more harm than good. It's about investing in affordable, social, public housing, whatever you like to call it, investing in rent assistance and homeless shelters and services. It's about helping people in need, whether briefly, during a difficult time, or for much longer, even permanently, when appropriate. Finally, it is about designing taxes and fees to be as efficient as possible, not only generating funding, funding for worthy ventures, but also to encourage the kind of behaviors, market behaviors, that improve conditions and improve lives. So just as an example, property taxes obviously can generate a lot of public funding, and they are the largest source of revenues from most local governments in the US. But the way property taxes are designed also shapes what people do with their properties. Designed poorly, as they are in California, frankly, they can encourage speculation and underproduction of housing. But designed well, in addition to raising revenues, they can also spur redevelopment of underutilized properties. Something I've learned in the years since writing The Affordable City is that people are often tempted to accept one or two of these priorities and reject the others. I would prefer that people think of supply, stability, and subsidy as more of a three-legged stool for affordable communities, something that with all three legs is very sturdy and reliable. But if you were to remove anyone, it would topple right over. Supply without stability can mean over-concentrated development, and can lead to unnecessary displacement and disruption. Supply without subsidy means, again, poor or otherwise struggling households will often be left behind. Stability without supply or without subsidy is really just managed decline. It is not progress. Stability policies are great for treating the symptoms of a dysfunctional housing market, but you also have to treat the underlying cause, which is not what stability policies are really suited to. Subsidy without supply is a recipe for endlessly increasing costs. In some ways, this is the story of LA, where I'm from, or have lived the last 10 years anyway. And it's why, after spending a few billion dollars on addressing homelessness over the past five years, we have come out the other end with more homeless residents. And the cost of a 400-square-foot supportive housing unit has increased from an already-high $350,000 per unit to over $600,000 per unit. And finally, subsidy without stability will lead many people to need assistance who might not have needed it otherwise. As people live with less stability, they are more likely to need public support. So just for a quick example here of how these policies can fit together, you know, say you want to change your city's zoning code to encourage more and more diverse types of home building, because it'll improve affordability and give residents more options to better suit their needs. But maybe you're worried that this increase in home building will lead to displacement. So what do we do? One option is to leave the zoning code as it is. But decades of evidence tell us that more housing is associated with lower rents, all else equal. And there's very little evidence that anything except increased supply can keep rents and prices affordable over the long haul. Abandoning the upzoning is probably a bad decision, because it's essentially giving up on affordability. And the harm of worsening affordability could actually lead to more displacement than any harms that might come from building more. This is where we need to start thinking about complements, which could include other supply policies, like upzoning many neighborhoods simultaneously, rather than one or two at a time. So we're not concentrating the impacts on just a few communities. Or it could allow, or could mean allowing denser housing where renters are less likely to live, like commercially-zoned parcels and neighborhoods where building multifamily homes is currently banned. Or it could include stabilizing policies, like those that require people to be compensated if they're displaced, or allow displaced tenants a right to return to the new development at a discounted rent when it's completed. Any of these policies would prevent or mitigate a great deal of potential harm from upzoning, while still keeping or even expanding many of its benefits. And I think all of these policies together would, would do even more. This is a slide I'm going to skip, and you can feel free to ask me about it later. But I'm already going to go over time here, so I'm going to move on. The last thing I will say on supply, a lot of people don't want their neighborhoods to change. And so they want to find reasons why it's not necessary, or why it might even do more harm than good. And honest truth is, I totally understand that impulse. I think we all have a little bit of status quo bias in it, in us. And I think it just varies what our status quo bias is really focused on. And really, few things are more important to us than the place that we call home. But my observation is that, at least in a free society where people are allowed to live where they please, you can't stop growth. You can't stop people from wanting to live in desirable places. You can only manage the form that growth takes. So broadly speaking, excuse me, most cities have just a few paths available to them. If people want to live in, stay in, and move to your city, if it's a desirable place, as, as this is, or then you can grow your housing stock to accommodate that rising demand, or you can not build housing. And that rising demand will instead manifest as rising prices. It doesn't go away, it just changes its form. If you're a place where few people want to live, then you're probably already in decline, or you're headed in that direction. And then, given the choice between these three options, number one seems like an obvious pick to me, at least. Another way of putting this is the image on the right. I think that cities can be appealing, affordable, or unchanging, but you have to pick two. If it's appealing and unchanging, it's not going to be affordable. You can think of big, expensive cities like New York and San Francisco that build very little housing. If it's appealing and unchanging, sorry, if it's unchanging and affordable, that's because it's not very appealing. I think you couldn't, you know, put many of your peers in Pennsylvania, and Ohio, and Michigan in, in this bucket. If it's appealing and affordable, it is not going to stay that way for long, if it is otherwise unchanging. Unless you plan for a future with more homes, people are going to pour in. And they're going to bid up the cost of housing until only the wealthy can afford it. So I think most of that is stuff you can, you can read in my book. I wanted to end here with just a few things I've been thinking a lot about in the years since writing the book, things I'm focusing on in my research as well. The first are two concepts that have gained prominence, I think, in the past three, five, seven years, missing-middle housing and brought-up zoning. Honestly, I think folks are mostly aware of what missing-middle housing is. All I will say, I'll just kind of skip to the benefits here, which is that like detached, single-family houses, missing-middle housing can be built with wood, which is the least expensive way to build housing in the US. And it usually doesn't require costly infrastructure like elevators or structured parking. It also has construction costs, sorry, it also had land costs more like multifamily housing. So you're sort of combining the best of both worlds here. It also makes it easier for local developers and contractors to get into this market, much easier for someone who's just working with some family or a few friends to build a six- or 12-unit building than a 100-unit building. And because the buildings are usually no more than three or four stories, they typically face at least a little bit less resistance than larger projects. Another topic I've been really focused on, and this is something I think I can take a little bit of credit for popularizing, is brought-up zoning or mass upzoning. We're still working on the nomenclature here. It's not great. This entails changing zoning to allow more housing on parcels across a city all at once, rather than doing targeted upzones, one neighborhood, one corridor, or even one parcel at a time. When you upzone at that more kind of concentrated, localized scale, you're doing a few things. One is you're very likely producing a windfall increase in the land value of the upzoned parcels, because you've created a relatively small number of locations where there will be intense interest in redevelopment. And so the value will be bid up. You're also concentrating redevelopment in just a few neighborhoods at a time, which also concentrates any real or perceived negative impacts from construction. which also concentrates any real or perceived negative impacts from construction. The appeal to me and I think more and more people of broad upzoning is that if everyone's property or at least many people's properties now allow more homes, then no one's can really be more valuable or especially more valuable. It's essentially this idea that if everyone is special, then no one is special. Because no one's property is special, land prices should not climb nearly as much as they would in a more concentrated upzone and those savings can be passed along to tenants and home buyers. And because more diverse housing types can be built in many new places, no individual neighborhood needs to bear a very disproportionate share of the burdens that come with growth. It becomes more of a shared endeavor where every neighborhood contributes to solving the housing crisis. I'll also skip mostly over this, but I will just say Auckland, New Zealand was really the first place to try the combination of these two things, missing middle and brought up zoning. And I could just skip to the production, which is the red line, which sharply shot up after 2016. And more importantly, because we don't really care about building more housing, except to make housing more affordable and to serve people, what Auckland saw is from 20, the end of 2016 through 2023, adjusted for inflation and rent, its rents basically did not increase, whereas the rest of New Zealand, they went up by more than 15%. Closer to home, Spokane, Washington, just recently upzoned two-thirds of its city, everything in in blue there for three stories, no density limits, no parking, 50% or more lot coverage. Very excited to see, you know, what comes of that. It was just six months ago. And Burlington, Vermont, just a few months ago, did something very similar. So we're gonna see some of the effects of this very soon, which is really exciting. Last slide, in a very circuitous way, my work on missing middle housing and broad upzoning led to an interest in inclusionary zoning, which is a really understudied, under-theorized subject for how widespread IZ has become across U.S. cities and across the world really. So using some modeling software that was created by colleagues at Berkeley, I wanted to look into how different IZ requirements could affect housing supply, both of market rate and of below-market units. I want to be very clear that these are just simulations, so they don't carry the same force as an empirical study. But even with that caveat, caveat, the the results really did raise my concerns about negative consequences of IZ. To summarize some of the key findings, I found that all else equal, IZ requirements at any level really always resulted in at least four fewer market rate homes for every one below-market unit produced. And beyond a certain point, higher IZ requirements began to produce fewer market rate and affordable homes. That's sort of where the blue, dark blue line starts to turn downward. Unsurprisingly, the units produced by IZ represent a huge private subsidy into affordable housing and that is an incredible benefit to people who desperately need assistance. I really don't want to be dismissive of that. At the same time, we know that lower overall production is associated with faster rent growth. And what this really means is that renters who don't live indeed restricted affordable housing, which is usually about 90% of renters, are paying the costs of this program. That's partly a problem because renters in many cities usually account for the minority of households. In Pittsburgh, it's about half and half owners and renters, which means the other half aren't really contributing to affordable housing in the same level, in the same way. But I think the bigger concern is that renters are much poorer than homeowners on average and so placing this burden on them seems very unfair. Nationally, median income for renters is about half that of homeowners and the same is roughly true for Pittsburgh. It's about 46,000 for renters, 84,000 for homeowners. So putting that all together, what I've been asking policymakers to consider and really just consider, because this is early work, is whether the benefits of IZ that accrue to a small number of very low-income households who do need help justifies higher costs for virtually all other renters. I found that if IZ resulted in even marginally faster rent growth, less than one extra percent per year, it would be enough to fully wipe out the value of those privately subsidized affordable units. Broad upzoning, missing middle housing, inclusionary zoning, these are all kind of frontiers of housing affordability research and policymaking. And there's a lot more that needs to be done, but they're some of the topics I'm most excited to study and to deepen our understanding of. And so I do really appreciate all of you for humoring me and sharing some of this work with you today. Thank you.
Thank you so much Shane. I do want to acknowledge Councilwoman Strasburger has joined us as well as Councilmember Warwick as well has joined us. Thank you. And I want to go into a question, question now, I want to hand it over to Council President Lavelle.
Thank you. So no, no real disagreement with anything you've presented. My question is, the truth is somewhere in the middle, based upon sort of the understanding that I have that yes, depending on how you upzone, you could potentially lead towards gentrification and displacement. Yes, if you only do inclusionary zoning, you have a different sort of problem, you're not producing as many units. Where, where have you seen a city do both and be successful? Because if you're going to strictly upzone, then you also, my understanding is you also have to have the protections in place to keep those who may potentially be displaced. So New York upzone, maybe early 2000s and they saw displacement, I think de Blasio came in behind and said, okay, now we've got to put in inclusionary measures because the increase in supply is pushing people out. So you understand, you understand where I'm headed with my question. So my, so my question is where is the sweet spot of both yes, upzoning so that you can get the amount of units into the market that are necessary while also having the measurements in place so that you're not displacing people at the same time?
Yeah, it's a really important question. I mean, I think the the New York case is kind of illustrative because what this was during Bloomberg's administration, there was, you know, there's been studies of this after the fact. The the upzonings that took place were predominantly in communities of color and poorer neighborhoods. And at the same time, there was a lot of downzoning that took place in wealthier, whiter neighborhoods. And so it was almost like the policy was designed to maximize displacement and gentrification. And of course, we don't have to and shouldn't do things that way. That's not the whole answer. I think, you know, one thing I've been, you know, coming from Los Angeles, they've done some very good things in recent years, after 50 years of doing everything wrong. And one thing, you know, what we did, which I think is not the best possible policy, but it was an improvement over what we had, was we did upzone in the form of a density bonus, but to take advantage of the density bonus, you had to include some affordable units. There are still costs to that relative to just allowing more housing overall. But I think the net effect so far has been more affordable housing and more market rate housing. Portland, Oregon is maybe the ideal from my perspective. They just recently reformed their inclusionary zoning law after it had some really negative effects on overall housing production to essentially subsidize it, to say, we care about affordable housing, but we care about it enough to actually pay for it and not to try to kind of squeeze out whatever we can from from the little housing that we were kind of allowing. And so I think they're doing it in a smart way, which is essentially a property tax rebate temporarily to sort of pay the cost. And so they get the housing, they get the affordable units. They have to kind of give up some affordable housing for a while, but it's mostly you know, very centrally located housing that's a net surplus for the city's budget anyway. And after five or 10 years, they're also getting the full property tax amount too, whereas the affordable units last much longer. I think the last thing I'll say on that is, I think inclusionary zoning as a anti-gentrification measure is, I don't think that's, should be its goal or its intent. I don't think it's designed for that or an anti-displacement measure. I think it's really, if anything, it's a, it's a sort of an integration measure. It's a way of getting affordable housing and people who otherwise might not be able to access certain neighborhoods, access to those neighborhoods and also mixing within buildings. I think if you want anti-displacement, things like tenant protections and you know, time-limited subsidies and these kinds of things are probably more effective.
Yeah, unfortunately here, the federal dollars that we use are really our best way to do that because of how the state is structured, we don't have the ability for to create like rent control and things of that nature in our city. Can you just go back a little bit and walk me through the Portland example of the rent rebate?
Sure.
I just want to make sure I understand.
Yeah, so essentially the city requires, I don't, I don't recall the percent, 10, 15%, maybe 20% of the units to be affordable to low or very low-income households, the way most IZ policies work. But they essentially calculate the cost of that. How much are you really discounting the rents? What is the net present value of that? What is the value in the building? And over time, through property tax rebates, you're gonna pay less than 100% of what you otherwise would until the property tax has paid you back. And I think the goal is, we don't want to, you know, just have a time limit on the property tax rebate that says, even if we pay you back in three years, it's gonna go for 10. I think it's, I think it's designed to basically get to that point where you're paid back and then that's it. It's not trying to overpay developers, it's just trying to pay what the affordable housing is worth. And I think one advantage of this, not to slight, you know, low-income housing tax credit projects or other kinds of subsidies for like 100% affordable projects. Those are often very expensive because of a lot of strings that are attached. And I think the cost of kind of making it viable for a market rate affordable or market rate or unsubsidized, otherwise unsubsidized developer to provide some affordable units, it's probably much lower per unit than these other programs. The challenge is that the other programs can use federal dollars and you can't use the federal dollars for inclusionary zoning.
Mr.
Do you have any more questions?
I'm good.
Next, next in the queue is Councilman Sharla.
Thank you, Councilman Mosley. So I really appreciate all of you being here today. Obviously, this is a very important case to me. Very, you know, I will be honest, I have not read all of your book, but I have read large excerpts of that. So I will finish it by the next time you come to talk to us. So I want to start off though with asking a question that I think we wrestle with a lot here on council. And, you know, we look a lot at doing income-restricted housing, creating more income-restricted units and really putting a lot of constraints on developers to create those, those units. And I'm curious, in your research, have you seen in any city, has that actually increased affordability?
Producing a lot of like deed-restricted units?
Yeah, so when we do something like saying that a developer can build, but we need them to build including, you know, 10%, 50%, or 10% of the units being 50% AMI. Is there any city where that actually increases affordability?
The short answer is, is no. I think the reason why is important. I think frankly, it would just, it would be possible if you built enough affordable housing. You could never build enough through inclusionary zoning, I think, because there's just, you really can't require more than 10 or 15 or 20% without just making projects infeasible. If you just had billions, tens of billions, hundreds of billions of dollars and could just, you know, subsidize tens of thousands of affordable housing units, then I think rents would eventually come down for everyone. The challenge in all cities is just that most of our housing is produced by the market and to produce the same amount of housing as subsidized affordable housing would in many cases take up the entire city budget. And I really want to be clear, like none of this is to like speak negatively or pejoratively of subsidized housing. It's just, there are limits to what I can do and it is complementary to market rate housing. The more market rate housing that we have, again, all else equal, the lower rents will be and actually often the lower land prices will be. Often also the lower construction costs will be because you'll just have a market of builders that is really robust. And so the money is gonna go a lot further, both for rent assistance and for construction. But yeah, it's, I think, just, if you, if you try to draw up the costs of replacing all market development with subsidized development, it is astounding.
Sure. Yeah, I just, I think it's an important distinction to make that when we try to create all this, you know, deed restrictions and confining developers on how they build, that we're trying to be the first city in America that has increased affordability by, by, by doing that. And that is just as, or not, not America, it just never worked. It's not, it is not a path to affordability.
I think it can absolutely be part of the solution. It's just, I don't think it can be the, the primary means. Yeah.
Correct, correct. So, you know, maybe on a similar note, maybe changing gears a little bit here. Pittsburgh is a city with a stable or slightly declining population. Why do we need more housing?
Very good question. I think, you know, one reason, one very important reason is that households' demographics are changing and household sizes are shrinking. And so in almost any city you look at, if, even if population was not growing at all, you would need more housing over time just to account for shrinking household sizes, empty nesters, just more people living alone. I don't recall the exact figures, but I think, you know, let's say 50 years ago, 10, 15% of households were single individuals. It's somewhere around 30, 40, 45% now. It's much, much higher. 45 is probably too high. But that's really like one of the main reasons. I think also just thinking about, housing doesn't last forever and we should want to improve our housing quality over time. And so we don't only have to build housing for new people and new households, but also we have to build housing just to improve what we have.
Sure. No, I understand that. So again, I haven't read your entire book. I've read excerpts of it. But your, your book is rather complimentary of inclusionary zoning. And I'm curious what research you've come across since the publishing of that book that maybe has made you rethink your, your stances a little bit here.
Yeah, I have, you know, in some of the policies have gotten like more pro on certain tenant protections, for example. I'm even stronger on inclusionary zoning, I am a little more skeptical, concerned, whatever you want to call it. I think it's hard to define exactly why. I guess part of it is the work I've been doing on broad upzoning and sort of coming to this realization that when you're upzoning a very small area, you're creating a lot of value in that land. And so in those circumstances, there is value to capture and in a sense you should capture it because otherwise it's just a windfall to the property owner. So I would rather get affordable housing out of that or something. When you're broadly upzoning, there's a trade-off there where land values may not be increasing much, so there's not much value to capture anymore. And so in those circumstances, any requirement like inclusionary zoning is just directly adding to the cost of the housing. It's not capturing something that was kind of up for grabs. I think that's probably the, the main reason for me.
Okay.
I apologize. I do want to add, I do still stand by what I said in the book and I'm very happy to admit where I was wrong in the book and I've changed my mind, but like in this case, one thing that I emphasize is policies that are voluntary and that include offsetting bonuses like density, height, floor area, et cetera, in exchange for the requirement to provide affordable housing. I think if you're pursuing a policy like that, there are still costs there, but I think that is the best way to go about it just because at worst, if it's designed poorly or if market conditions change, all you, the worst you will have done is leave developers with the same options they had before. When you replace what is, you know, available now, the pathways to build with a mandatory program, even if it includes bonuses, if it's designed poorly, now you've actually reduced the total housing production. So I think that's important to keep in mind.
Good, thank you. The next question I have for you, so Pittsburgh has a small inclusionary zoning overlay. It's larger now than it, than it was, but we have an inclusionary zoning overlay. There is a discussion about expanding that citywide. In your opinion, would that expansion increase or decrease the affordability of the city of Pittsburgh?
I mean, it's, it's very hard to comment on with no details on the policy. Again, like all else equal, probably long-term.
Yeah, our policy is.
Most people's rents are a little higher or a lot higher, but you get some affordable units and like that's, that's the trade-off to grapple with. And I, I'm very sympathetic to especially local government officials who have real demands on them to produce affordable housing. And you have very limited tools. You know, you don't have federal government level subsidies to add to what exists. So I understand the, the, the challenge there and the pressure. And that's why I think a policy like Portland's is actually very. And that's why I think a policy like Portland's is actually very effective because it's, it's, for one, it's making sure that you're not going to have negative impacts. I think it's also just like an important statement that if you care about something, we should all like come together to pay for it together.
So we, you know, largely we would decrease affordability, but we would increase more affordable units is what.
Yeah, which is tough to keep in your head, but yeah, I, I think that's generally true.
Sure. And then I, um, I think the, the last real question I have for you. We're talking a lot about a lot of different subsidy programs, a lot of different, um, zoning changes. Do you think that we should be looking at doing these step by step? Or do you think that a, a large, um, kind of sweeping change would, would be most effective? Or, or do you think, you know, try one and, and see if that works and, and move through sort of a piecemeal effect?
Definitely pro kind of go big, you know? For one, just the, the scale of the problems that, that communities are facing, I think warrants a pretty ambitious approach. But again, going back to some of the research, some of the just observed effects of these more targeted upzones, the more concentrated, the more piecemeal, the more, you know, we're going to do this community, then that community, six months later and so forth. You're concentrating development in certain neighborhoods at different times. You're probably increasing land values so that landowners often are benefiting more than, than renters or at least not as much as renters and, and home buyers could be benefiting. Yeah, I think there's, there's really, and I think, you know, there are probably political considerations in all of this too, where it's, maybe political isn't even the word. I think there's just like community buy-in where people can be frustrated that their community is being told it's going to change and the communities around them are not. And there may be a promise that the community next door is going to get a new plan in six months or 12 months. But, you know, people don't always trust that that's going to happen. And, and so I think being able to bring everyone along at the same time can actually build support in addition to actually just having better outcomes.
Great. All right. Thanks, Ed.
And, and before I go to Councilmember Coghill, I've seen a lot of, uh, like physical responses to some of the questions and stuff. So I wanted to give opportunity for the panelists to respond to any particular question. Started with Tammy, then down, and then we'll go to my esteemed colleague, Councilman Coghill.
So I just have one question and everything that you're speaking about right now. I'm thinking about how unique Pittsburgh is. Pittsburgh is still one of the most segregated cities in this country. And I'm wondering how that impacts what's happening in our city right now? And how some of these solutions, um, how will some of these solutions particularly includes an inclusionary zoning and, and broad zoning? When I hear you say that there are people who are like, they don't want, what, sometimes what they're saying is they don't want inclusionary zoning. And it's not that they're afraid of change, they're afraid of certain people coming into their neighborhood. I mean, that's just the reality. We don't want poor people, we don't want people who don't look like us. And I think that has contributed to the mess that we're in now. And I think as, uh, I think as decision makers, we have to be honest about the fact that race and segregation, uh, are going to play a part in where development happens and how development happens in the city.
I, I don't have much to add to that. I think what you said is exactly right. I think you have to face it head on. I think you have to actually talk about it. I think the history here, I, I think someone was telling me that there's, there's like a very clear relationship between formerly redlined communities and where multifamily housing is allowed. And the ones that were the green and yellow on the map or green and blue or whatever the good ones were, those are the single family neighborhoods. And the, the former are mostly black and the latter are mostly white. And so there is a need to address that head on. And that includes in the way that the zoning reform takes place. I think, I actually, in California, there was a, a federal housing reform at HUD in 2015 to affirmatively further fair housing, to really like add some accountability to the provisions in the Fair Housing Act of 1968 that, um, required affirmatively furthering fair housing, which is to say, you can't just not discriminate. You actually have to undo the harms of past segregation. And so we've been doing a lot of work on that. And, and a lot of what that looks like is making sure that housing of all kinds, but affordable housing in particular is allowed disproportionately in wealthier, whiter neighborhoods. And it's, it's a very hard fight. It's not, it's by no means an easy thing to do, but I think there are a lot of people who understand why this is important and are, are ready to fight for that. But again, I just want to like underline again that being very direct about it and saying it out loud, I think is really important. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, and then Dr. Walker, then Ms. Daniels, and then we'll go to Councilman Coghill.
Thank you. Just to build on, um, what Tammy stated, um, a lot of the neighborhoods that are affordable and unchanging and not appealing, directly abut up against some of the highest income neighborhoods in the city. They're, um, separated by a street, a busway, um, a park. And so just want to add that context for Pittsburgh when we think about, um, inclusionary zoning and how it could affect the city.
Dr. Walker.
Your presentation was profound, gave me a lot to think about as you built upon what was available in the book. A couple of things that I was thinking about is, you know, Pittsburgh is a parochial city and our solutions to affordable housing are parochial in nature. We want to do it on a project by project basis. And so if we are talking about some sort of citywide inclusionary zoning mechanism and we have 17,000 units of missing affordable housing, we need on the supply side, 170,000 units of standard housing in order to make that math work. And I think we can sit here right now and say, where would we put 170,000 units of housing, affordable or, or market rate or otherwise, in the city of Pittsburgh? Um, so that's, you know, something I'm thinking about as we talk about extracting the number of units that are needed solely from a mechanism like inclusionary housing on the fundamentals, it doesn't work. I think the other thing that I would be concerned about is whether or not the kind of mark, the kind of signals that we send to the market by telling developers, they are responsible for figuring out how to fund affordable housing and we're not rethinking our subsidy configuration and thinking about it strategically as to how we could enable inclusionary zoning or inclusionary, uh, units within market rate housing through the use of project based vouchers, the bond and other things like that. The conversations are happening in a very fragmented manner. The last thing that I will note is that there is a palpable fear of gentrification. And one of the things you talk about in the book is properly defining and understanding gentrification and its relationship to displacement and cultural erasure. Because what we have now, we have neighborhoods that are in need of investment that are very fearful of any type of housing unless it's 100% affordable housing, which is not necessarily feasible. Because if you think of the choice neighborhood model, they will not allow you to do 100% affordable housing because they want a neighborhood rich with amenities. So until we change the conversation and start reeducating people about what gentrification and benign neglect are, I think we're going to continue to have some of these pervasive issues. So again, thank you for the information you presented today.
You're good. How about we're going to go to, uh, the Councilman Coghill and then next in the queue after Councilman Coghill is Councilwoman Gross and then Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you, Councilman Mosley, and, uh, thank you for holding us. This is a very important subject. It's, you know, deserves the attention that you're bringing to it. And I appreciate you bringing Shane into town. Shane, your first time, first time in Pittsburgh?
It is.
Okay, welcome, welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, before I get, yeah.
I mean, I, I don't mean to like imply anything negative here. Far more beautiful than I expected.
Still smoky town.
That's a very nice town.
We can't shake that image, you know, as much as we try. That's great, thank you. And, um, but before I go to you Shane, Tina, I wanted to say, um, you own your own construction business?
Yes.
Well, you know, that is really refreshing, you know? I'm in the, you know, construction field myself and very few female owned businesses. And so it's, it's very refreshing. And you're just finishing, finishing up your fourth three bedroom home? In what, what part?
It's a multifamily four, three bedroom apartments on Bennett Street, 6900 block.
Nice, nice.
And it's beautiful about it.
Oh, I bet, I'll bet.
I can attest to that as well.
I can tell you the quality work just by looking at you, all right? So Tina, let me ask you, uh, are you a nonprofit?
Uh, no, I'm a for-profit.
You're a for-profit?
Yes.
So, so how do you build and make it affordable?
So we apply for, um, the, the project we're working on finishing up now, we applied for the federal home loan grant. So we were awarded that subsidy. And I also partnered with some local nonprofits, neighborhood allies for this project here. But, uh, project we're starting in July, we were awarded another federal home loan grant for that one. It's Anderson Estates, it's going to be eight affordable apartments. Four will be two bedrooms and four will be four bedroom apartments, both of which are less than 1% of newly constructed affordable housing. So I wanted, I definitely like to focus on those areas, three and four bedrooms. And, um, so with local partnerships with nonprofits and affordable grants, and, uh, we also are working with the URA for applying for some of their rental gap funding.
That's what I was going to ask you if you, you use the city, uh, offers. So you're renting them?
We're going to rent them.
You're selling, no?
Well, we, we have some affordable rentals down the pipeline also with some property we own up on a Harp and next to Reserve Township, but it's still in the city.
Got it, got it. But the ones that you're just finishing up, they're rentals?
They're rentals.
And what will they be rented for approximately?
So we're going to do based on, uh, section eight guidelines. So, uh, when you apply for the affordable funding, we did, we are committed to 53 apartments will be, two apartments will be 50%, one will be 30% AMI and the other one can be 60 to 80% AMI.
So, so is that part of you receiving the grants that you have to commit to that?
Yes.
I see.
15 years of affordability for different grants have different requirements of, the one we were awarded is 15 years. I know the URA has their own stipulations on their affordability grants. So it's, it depends on what kind of funding you get.
Well, good work, uh, really, really impressed you. You're from the city?
I'm born and raised here in Pittsburgh.
What part of town?
Uh, Northside.
Northside, okay. Perry High School?
Langley High School.
Langley, my state.
We, we're from the same neighborhood.
That's great. Well, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
On what you're doing. Keep, keep building, that's great.
Thank you.
Really fantastic stuff to hear. So, um, so Shane, uh, yes, I, you know, I, I saw the first model or first facility you put up in Los Angeles. 200 units and 40 of them were affordable. Right. Is that, uh, inclusionary zoning, Los Angeles style or what was that?
So long, uh, what was the, it might have been, there's a state density bonus program, which is its own voluntary IZ inclusionary zoning program. It might've been using that program. Yeah. So you get additional density, height, parking relief, that kind of thing. You have to provide some percent of the units for low income households.
Understood. You know, we have, uh, Dr. Walker, uh, mentioned that we have 17,000, we put a number on 17,000 short units as to affordable housing here in Pittsburgh. What's Los Angeles like?
The, the methodologies for measuring your shortage differ. I know one, uh, estimate by the California Housing Partnership that they do every year. I think this is for all of LA County, which is 10 million people. There's about 3.3 million homes in LA County. I think the number is right around 500,000.
Okay, well, I'm glad we don't have your problem.
Me too.
I, you know, they're, it's going to be hard enough for us to get to that point.
Being a good person, you know?
Yeah, right, right. And you, I, I noticed you have a 55 year restriction for affordable housing rate. I think we basically work on a 40 year restriction.
It's, it can be anywhere from 15 to permanent.
In Pittsburgh?
It just depends on the.
Depends on the funding source?
Correct.
Gotcha. URA is 40?
Correct.
That's what I thought, yeah. You know, a wildly popular thing in one of my neighborhoods is senior housing. You deal with that a lot?
I haven't really done research on it, but it's definitely, you know, you see it especially in places that otherwise are not very friendly to affordable housing. Oftentimes, they can make an exception for grandma.
Right, right. Tammy, uh, you know, I will second what you said about just the perception of affordable housing, right? People get scared, they're afraid, oh my gosh, they're going to ruin the neighborhood, whoever they may be. I didn't find that with the senior housing, but I do find that with, you know, any type of affordable housing. And it depends on the neighborhood, but people are just preconceived notions, I guess, which is not fair. But I do acknowledge that exists, trust me. So does Los Angeles put a lot of money into, uh, affordable housing? Like what kind of funds do you?
Honestly, at this point, most of our funding is going into homelessness related funding.
The city or the county you're speaking of? Are we talking city? Okay, okay, go.
The, we passed a $1.2 billion bond in, in, uh, 2017, which is mostly spent.
Billion.
Yeah. And that built 8,000 or so affordable housing units, supportive housing units. Most of those are not complete still, but they're mostly underway. We increased our sales tax to about an extra half percent to fund about $300 million a year in, in services for homelessness. The state level is, is much more though. I think over the past five years, they've put something on the order of 20 to 30 billion dollars into homelessness. And again, the, the number is not lower.
Right, right. Do you?
I, I, I do want to be clear though.
Sure.
If we hadn't spent that money, it would be even higher unquestionably. So it's not that the money was wasted, it's just, it was not enough. And I don't think that any amount of money alone would necessarily be enough.
You have, Councilwoman Gross and I have done extensive work on tiny management zones, okay? Do you have those in Los Angeles?
Management?
Temporary managed zones. Communities, like, uh, kind of like tiny.
We don't have like, uh, I'm from Seattle originally and, and we had like tent cities is how they were referred to. Which was kind of a formal sanctioned location. Obviously, Los Angeles has a lot of unsanctioned tent encampments. We do have newer kind of tiny home villages in a few locations, not, not like.
Okay, so you've not made a large investment in that. It's not something you see across the city.
Not that specifically.
Yeah, I understood, understood. So your investment in the homeless population goes toward housing?
Housing and services, yeah.
Housing and services, right, right. It's interesting. I mean, we have that problem, not to the scale you have certainly, but, uh.
And I guess, you know, a, a meaningful amount of money does go toward like encampment cleanups, majoritively referred to as sweeps, I think, depending on how they're performed. The, the, the pejorative phrasing is, is warranted. There have been efforts in just the last year or so with our new mayor to really like guarantee, connecting people to some kind of shelter, not just shelter, but actually at least like transitional housing, I believe, for anyone who is in one of the encampments being swept away or cleaned up. So that's a good thing. We are having challenges though with, it's extremely expensive and we're kind of running out of money to keep ensuring that, yeah.
Has, uh, the investments you made in the homeless population, uh, has it made a difference? Has it been successful?
Successful, I think, I don't think anyone could call it successful. It has also, as I said, unquestionably made a difference. I think that, you know, we are in the city alone, somewhere around 45 to 50,000 unhoused people on any given night, which is more than one out of every hundred residents in the city. And most of those are unsheltered. And, and that is up from, from the past, from maybe 35 to 40,000, let's say five years ago. So things have gotten worse, but you know, one thing I always point to and not, really not trying to be defensive of LA's overall approach, but I just think it's important to acknowledge the work that has been done and where it has helped. Our, our Homeless Services Authority, which is a city county entity, they are helping more people into housing every year than they ever have, by far. The, the funding has really helped with that. The problem is that the number of people becoming homeless is increasing even faster. And that, I think, really goes back to supply.
Right. Does any of that money go into building?
Quite a bit of it does, yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah.
New facilities?
Yeah. Mostly supportive housing. Not a lot of new shelters or.
No, no, right, yeah, yeah, we, we don't, I don't, I personally don't believe in this. It's shelters, they may be necessary for somebody to get off the street for that night. But yeah, we want to move them on that.
Yeah, I think you, you want a, a short term, you don't want to leave people on the street while you take years to build housing, but it's certainly not the long term solution, hopefully.
So in the whole schematic, um, housing shortage, affordable housing shortage, if I'm reading between the lines right, you feel like upzoning, is that what you call it, upzoning? It's probably the most effective way. It's probably the most effective way to increase whether market rate and below-market rate.
Yeah, I, I think, again, to the, the three-legged stool point, I think you can't just do that. I think if you do not do that, if, if housing is difficult to buy, uh, build, illegal to build in many cases, uh, and there's a relationship between those things, then, you know, prices will go up across the board. Whatever you're spending on affordable housing will not buy as much. You know, I, I, I look at a place like Austin, Texas, um, maybe not the best example because they've had so much growth, um, they've, they've had a lot of pressure, but even just other parts of Texas, uh, Dallas, Houston. Texas is not as generous a state when it comes to homeless services, affordable housing, uh, really anything. They do not profess the same, you know, support for low-income people and people of color. I think as, as many, uh, Los Angeles officials do, and, and that's something I like about Los Angeles, and yet we have, you know, tens of thousands of people leaving our state every year to move to Texas. I think the majority of them people of color, and the majority of them who earn under fifty or sixty thousand dollars a year, and I think that comes down to housing. I think there's no question that that comes down to housing, and so I think there's, for me, there's always just this tension of, you know, intentions matter, but they don't matter as much as outcomes, and our intentions are good and our outcomes are bad.
Would, would you say, uh, Los Angeles is it, do, do you feel, maybe you know this, maybe you don't, but the funding that you put in to services versus housing, does one outweigh the other, or is it?
Uh, this is the eternal debate. I don't, I don't know what the optimal would be. I'm sure it varies based on how much unsheltered homelessness you have, how much chronic homelessness versus newly homeless. Um, I think I guess one place I would point to as maybe, I don't know, somewhat of a cautionary tale, but also a positive story in, in another way, is New York City, where they have a right to shelter, which basically means that the city has to offer you a space and a shelter, or if they don't have space and shelter, they have to offer you a hotel voucher, essentially. So, they have to get you off the street one way or another. And, and it's why a lot of people don't think that homelessness in, in New York City is that bad. It's actually worse than L A. It's just they don't have a lot of unsheltered homelessness. But it is extraordinarily expensive for the city, and it does take away resources from longer-term solutions, and so I don't have the solution to that. It's hard for me to say allow more people to, to sleep on the street, especially in a place like New York City with its weather, but.
I was gonna say, it's one thing you have in L A, it's better weather.
Yes.
And, uh, Pittsburgh could be pretty harsh, although we've been fortunate the last couple of years, but.
People do die on the streets in L A from, from the weather, but, but yeah, it's nothing like Pittsburgh or New York.
Yeah, right, right. Um, well, Shane, welcome to Pittsburgh. Thank you. I appreciate you being here. Again, thank you, Councilwoman Mosley. Um, I appreciate what you're doing.
Thanks, Councilman Cockel. Uh, next in the queue is, uh, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and thank you to all of the panelists for being here and for everything that you bring to this discussion today, but also for the work that you're doing, um, to help us get, solve this problem, right? In Pittsburgh, we like to, like, see the progress we're making and actually make progress on things, and our citizens demand that of us, and as they should, right? That we not just talk about it, um, but that we do it. We're very pragmatic that way. Um, and so, first, I wanna clarify some numbers, um, about I Z, and I've, I've mentioned this every, um, several times this year when we've had this discussion. So, we wanna make sure that we compare apples to apples when we're talking about, you know, other cities, and, and Pittsburgh is not like Los Angeles, and it's not like San Francisco, and it's not like Denver and Austin and other cities in Seattle that have had extraordinarily upward population pressure. Um, so we know that we have decreased our population by half, um, but we don't want to, right? We wanna add back housing, and we want to add back population, especially, we know from the twenty-ten to the twenty-twenty population, um, taken by the census, that we mostly lost black population. And so, the downward population pressure is not like forty years ago when people were leaving because a steel mill closed and twenty thousand jobs were gone overnight. Now, it's because they can't afford the rent. And that's just stupid. We need to fix that, right? Because we want our people, and we don't want to force them out of the city. And I will, I, I will say again and again, um, representing the people of Lawrenceville who fought really hard for the first inclusionary overlay in the city, knowing that their neighborhood, at the time, because this is less true every day, at the time was unlike all the others in that it had such intense market investment, that there was just millions and millions of dollars of development going into Lawrenceville. And they didn't want that to be only luxury units. They wanted the developments because they had already lost so many neighbors as a city of homes, right? Um, when you think about the Lawrenceville kind of skyline, you're looking at a thousand tiny houses, right? A lot, a lot of little rooftops, but more than half of the residents were renters. And the developers were flipping, you know, the grandma's house that had five or six apartments, we all know what that is in Pittsburgh, right? Over the years, most of our single-family dwellings had, uh, many, many, many of our single-family dwellings had apartments in them. And so, they got flipped back to single-family. So, instead of it being five section-eight apartments, or five very low-rent apartments in a hundred-year-old house that was all chopped up, but Bloomfield is the same way, you know, you'd see just lots and lots and lots and lots of lots of fairly modest houses, but sixty-five percent of the population of nine thousand people are renters. And so, you didn't see a tower come down, but over the years, as those house, one house after the other, after another, for hundreds of houses, you've lost a thousand, two thousand renters, low-income renters. Um, and so, the opportunity, you can buy those houses back now that they're five hundred or eight hundred thousand or nine hundred thousand dollar houses and put apartments back in them. You, um, was there big parcels on the riverfront where the factories used to be? And so, they knew developers were going to build the two hundred-unit apartments and the three hundred-unit apartment buildings, and so they knew that to gain back their neighbors and have any chance of gaining back and maintaining a diverse neighborhood by race or by income, they had to add back affordable units. And it was a really thoughtful strategy that was developed over many, many, many neighborhood meetings that the neighborhood led themselves. Um, and so, um, they fought for it, and they got it, and we were really happy to help here at the table pass the first inclusionary zoning overlay for Lawrenceville, and those apartments did come. So, while I hear, and I don't dispute, because I'm not doing the research firsthand myself, that nationwide, or in this city, or in that city, or across the nation, you know, three thousand miles from here, there's a place where inclusionary zoning hasn't worked, or has, can be proven to have slowed down a market. We've only had it for about three years. Um, and we have a kind of nice experiment where we've got it in literally just three percent of the landmass of the city um, in twenty-twenty-one, and then as we added out two more neighborhoods that are represented, Bloomfield and Polish Hill in twenty-twenty-one, I think, twenty-twenty, yeah, by the end of twenty-twenty-one, so we're playing twenty-twenty-two. That landmass goes up to almost five percent of the city, four percent, four and three-quarters percent. And so, there's inside that four percent of the city where the, there's mandatory I Z, and then there's, you know, the rest of the city. And if you look at how many units were built in twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, and twenty-twenty-three, you can compare how many were built inside and how many but were outside. Was there less inside? If this hypothesis is true, there would be less, but in fact, there are more. Um, in fact, there's almost twice as much built inside the inclusionary zoning zone than outside in Pittsburgh, so, it's seven point six percent of all units produced inside the I Z, as opposed to it being only four percent of the, four and a half percent of the landmass, so. You know, not a lot of data, but a little bit of data. Um, and I, and I'll point out that, and I've said this before in other contexts, that for us, the inclusionary zoning, um, overlay is on top of three very hot markets. There's, there are more neighborhoods that we consider to be hot markets, uh, than that, that aren't in I Z yet, but those, you know, every square inch of city that's inside the I Z are, are places where we know developers are coming, and the neighbors are, again, welcoming the development, welcoming the density that helps support their small businesses, acknowledging that they're on transit lines, that there's all of the things that are neighborhoods of opportunity, that the Supreme Court says cities have to provide affordable housing in neighborhoods of opportunity, and not just in neighborhoods of not opportunity. And that those, they are those neighborhoods. Um, it's close to downtown, close to job centers, you can get to a dentist, a daycare, a drugstore, school, those kinds of things, so I wanna make sure we give them credit. They weren't putting inclusionary zoning in to be anti-development, they're putting it in to be pro-mixed-income neighborhood. And, um, but we can, you know, we also have outside of that mandatory zone increased areas where there already are the market incentives, it's just that people aren't using them, right? So, we've had one, a residential LERTA in place for years that said if you, um, build the same kind of proportion, ten percent of the units at fifty percent A M I, uh, that you get this tax abatement citywide. Um, but people are just not opting for it. Uh, so that's, I think, food for thought for us, and I, I've, I've said it before, and I'll say it again. We have, because of our depopulation over many decades now, places in the city that are basically have opposite, really extremely opposite market dynamics. So, there are city, there are places in the city that have suffered from disinvestment and blight and neglect and population loss, and we've been struggling with that for years. But now, we also have parts of the city that are also seeing really market extremes, that you talk about a little bit, I think, Shane, in your book, so hyper-investment, and actual displacement, and kind of, uh, and it's an opposite version of a market extreme. And so, for at, at this table, to figure out how we create balance, I think we need to keep in mind how we moderate both market extremes. And some, that might be opposite pol- policies for different targeted areas of the city. And it's hard to keep up with that because it's a little less true than when I first started saying this, like, four years ago. Because prices are going up in the West End, and prices are going up in District Four, south of the Monongahela, where they didn't used to have been going up, right? Like, six or seven years ago. Affordable housing, you know, the council rep that's sitting here and the council rep before him said, like, it's we only have affordable housing, we don't have anything but affordable housing. We could use some middle-income people and some higher-afforded middle-income people because we don't have any. But that's less true now, so it's really hard for us to kind of stay up on that, but, uh, Professor Phillips, if you have any examples of cities that you've looked at and kind of like, said, like, so these are, you know, here's apples to apples, but here's oranges, oranges to oranges, like, where are the kind of legacy cities, not sunbelt cities, northeastern cities that are suffering from collapsing infrastructure, where we have to replace lead water service lines, which I don't know that that's a thing in Los Angeles, I have no idea. Um, you know, we've spent almost two hundred million dollars on that, as well as three hundred million dollars on affordable housing, and that's coming out of just our, our low income, our, our citizens per capita of a, a lower, um, A M I than a lot of cities, right? There's a, we are, we have a higher portion of, of people below the poverty line, and we just, we are not, we don't have a super wealthy tax base, um, and they're paying the water bills, and they're paying all these bills to do all this stuff, so. Are there any oranges, or is it, you know, have you only looked at apples?
Uh, well, no, I don't think there are many, is it apples? In part, because I, I think there's only been a limited number of inclusionary zoning studies, because it's extremely hard to study I Z, you know, in a, like.
I'm sorry, I, not just I Z, but broadly, you, your book is Affordable Cities.
Yeah.
So, um, maybe you break it out, and I missed it, because I honestly only skimmed it as well, but do you kind of say there are different legacy challenges with certain cities? Certainly, population pressure is, uh, for the west coast cities that you mentioned, is part of the challenge, um, and is not part of the challenge for other cities in the United States, so, um, I think it's, not all cities are
Yeah, yeah.
have the same dynamics.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I mean, I think it, it seems that in many ways, Pittsburgh is, is becoming more like the, the coastal cities in terms of demand and the pressures.
We, we declined, we continue, we've declined every year, every decennial census. By po- cities, the cities have declined in population?
Los Angeles has shrunk a little bit in California, as a whole has, yeah.
There's a little bit of seven hundred thousand to three hundred thousand, we're now three hundred thousand.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. Not like, in the long scope of history, nothing like that, absolutely. And, yeah, I'm not trying to say that we are exactly the same, and I think everywhere has different needs to some extent, but I really do think that, big picture, a lot of these needs are similar, and where you might need to spend your money on, on infrastructure replacement and, and things of that nature might differ from California or Miami or what have you. But, you know, I, I think about, you, when you say that, you know, you don't have a strong tax base, like, market-rate housing would help with that. Um, you would have people who can afford to live there, who are paying taxes, and probably, in most cases, producing more taxes than they're using in services, not to mention a lot of times, those developments are required to make infrastructure upgrades themselves. Um, so, you know, I, I think I don't, I, I really don't want this to be like, you know, you need to do exactly what Los Angeles has done, or other cities, uh, that are in a different position, but again, if you're facing increasing demand, I really do think a lot of the policies are gonna come down to, to similar things, and when you get into the details of like, what does the zoning code look like? What does the subsidy program look like? What is the infrastructure fees and, and these kinds of things look like? It's gonna be different, and it should be sensitive to local conditions. But at the same time, I think there, there are things to, to learn, even from a place like Los Angeles, but also places like Spokane, that is a two hundred thousand-person city. You know, interestingly, those two examples of Spokane and, and Burlington, Spokane voted for Trump in twenty-twenty, and Burlington was like eighty-five percent for Biden. Um, we're seeing a lot of, you know, very different cities, both in politics and in demographics and, and history that are reaching very similar conclusions in the broad strokes.
I see. Um, so, um, I had a follow-up thought to that, but no, I kind of lost it. So, when you say, um, looking at challenges in your zoning code, we've been talking about this here on and off. What do you see that jumps out at you in Pittsburgh zoning code?
Oh, I haven't looked at Pittsburgh zoning code.
Okay, yeah, I got it. Do we have any of our other, um, panelists who have any suggestions for, for zoning?
I think that we need zoning reform writ large, and that we are trying to build a city from the nineteen forties and nineteen fifties with the twenty-first century uh, reality and context, and I don't think that we've visited, revisited the way that we need to. We need to think about how to create accessible dwelling units, how to incentivize or de-incentivize single-family development, particularly in communities that already have an oversaturation of that, and to be a little bit more, um, distributive when we think about where to place multifamily housing, and um, to incentivize development, responsible development in neighborhoods that have not seen it for the last fifty years. And so, I, again, I don't wanna, I, I would prefer to see a city-wide zoning rethinking versus this neighborhood now has market pressure, it's time to rethink zoning in this particular neighborhood. Um, I think that should append our new city-wide planning process and be expedited.
Anybody else wanna chime in? So, thank you, Dr. Walker. I also have, um, you know, I think now we're going on, three years ago, when I put a resolution on the table for, um, asking planning and P L I, and anybody else, I think, at city departments to look at how we get to accessory dwelling units. And also, I like to put in, uh, another plug for limited equity housing co-ops, which, again, we can have their multifamily, but have accessible ownership, and we can create that pathway where we can have more housing, but also have people being housing-stable and building equity while they're in that housing. And I should acknowledge Councilwoman Smith did a tour of a limited equity housing co-op, and I had the, I had the packet. and I had the, I had the packet in front of me. I missed the tour, but I have the packet and I was going to wave it around, but I left it back in my office. And Councilman Mosley also has a limited equity housing co-op legacy project in his district that I think in both cases, the purchase price for a home is under $50,000. It's been there for 60, somebody here says fantastic.
Yeah, Belmar also Sheridan has one.
Yeah, we just, we just toured Sheridan.
Yeah, Sheridan's co-op. I think the co-op, I think what I believe is that we need as many options on the table as possible. I know that, you know, it's, we're like, well, we're not California and we're not. But our homelessness numbers are increasing at a rate that should terrify all of us. And it's not just single families, single folks on the streets. We're talking about entire families and we're getting these calls every single day. And it's not just because people can't afford their rent. It's also dilapidated housing and substandard rentals that people are living in that are pushing them out of their homes. So for, to no father own, not because they didn't pay their rent, but because our housing stock is old and we haven't necessarily invested at large scale to stabilize existing homeownership. So we, we have some challenges that are layered, I think. And I think we're going to have to think about these from all of these issues to get to solutions. I was surprised and very terrified to get as many calls as we're getting for folks who are having to leave their home with nowhere else to go because the housing that they're living in is, is substandard. That it's literally rotting around them. We have communities where we're having levels of rot that I don't see in other neighborhoods, quite honestly. So I think when we're trying to come up with solutions, we, we just have to get really honest about what's happening in this city. And focus on what a heavy investment in the front end, the, the return on that investment is, is what I think we should be most focused on. I know money is a big issue and coming up with finding ways to raise money to solve this is, but if we don't find the money on the front end, we're just going to have to find it on the back end. So I, I just don't want us to lose sight that because we're a smaller, we are a smaller city and we're not facing the issues that, that larger cities are facing at the same scale. But these issues are happening here and they're happening at an alarming rate in comparison to our population. It's alarming. And we don't have solutions in place. We don't have anywhere to put these families that are facing homelessness. And so if we think we're alarmed by walking around downtown Pittsburgh and seeing increased homelessness, I hope that we never get to a point where we are walking past family encampments. And I, I just honestly don't think we're that far off from that based on the level of families that we're getting calls from.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else? Did you want to chime in?
I, I just wanted to ask about, we, we are currently working on a project in Wilkinsburg where we are building out a home to be transitional housing for veterans, homeless veterans, transitioning from homelessness. And we are receiving some pushback on the zoning. Do you have any insight on how shared housing and community living structures help with alleviate the pressure of homelessness?
Nothing specifically, no. I think, to your point though, I think there's, the approach to homelessness, much like the approach to housing generally, needs to be kind of an all of the above. And I think sometimes people think about homeless shelters or transitional housing and think, well, that's not appropriate for this person or this group of people. And that's maybe true, but it's probably the best option for someone. A lot of people can't really live with roommates, but many can. And they might actually be better off in those circumstances and having some, you know, companionship and social time and everything. So all I would just say is like allowing, you know, a, a lot of different options and to, for people to really figure out what works best for different people at different times in their lives should always be a priority on housing and homelessness.
We do have, the legislation that Councilwoman Coghill was referring to, and the reason I had to step out was what we have a working group on, which is to try to, how to lower zoning barriers in the city currently for transitional housing. So the temporary managed communities are not tent cities. They're not, they're not independent, right? So they are actually transitional housing is what we propose, temporary managed communities. We, Denver did it, which is that you're, you're placed into the, the, the housing and there's 24-hour wraparound services and you can stay up to 24 months so that you can get your life back because we know that it works in other cities and people, even in, in the city now, the transitional facilities that we have. Veterans Place, which is fully federally funded, not a dime from the city, not a dime from the county, embarrassingly, has about 50 spots. They permanently rehouse 100 people a year, which means the average stay is six months. And these are people coming, some, some right off the street, some with mental health issues, addiction issues, but they are working through them and, and getting their lives back. And so we need thousands more of that. So the temporary managed community legislation that Councilwoman Coghill and I co-sponsored, which is pending at the Planning Commission to change our zoning rules, is to lower the barriers in parts of the city so that you can do a transitional housing in, inside, like adaptive reuse of a building so that can be transitional housing and/or the tiny house communities that are temporary structures are very easy to put up, they don't meet code, they're not permanent tiny houses, but still that, so you could have a managed community with social services onsite with bathrooms and cleanliness and, and water and all those kinds of city support onsite so that we can get people kind of on that pathway to housing, right, and out of the tents. So we're working through that so that, and that I think what, the reason it's been held and we're working with the City Planning Department is I think that they have, they have their own language so that maybe we can see that citywide, we'll see. And it's based on federal fair housing requirements. So we're, we're hopeful that we're going to figure it out. We've been working on it now for, it feels like a year because we know that it's worked in some 100 cities nationwide, either permanent tiny houses or temporary structures and also adaptive reuse of existing buildings. So council has had its own committee, we've been working on it now, actually for a couple of years. So we hope to get that through. So with all those things, the only thing I think is a favorite topic of mine that I haven't asked anybody here about, and I know some of the people at the table have worked on these projects and so we don't want to fail to mention them, is restoration of historic single-room occupancy buildings, which has been great that the URA and partners have funded, and also new single-room occupancy. I am honored to represent a district that was historic boarding and lodging houses, like Polish Hill, almost half of the housing stock was, were built as boarding houses for workers to walk up those steep city steps up to their rooms for rent when we experienced rapid population growth more than 100 years ago. And people were immigrating here from Europe and the countryside to work at factories. So anybody here has worked on the SRO projects? I feel like it's lost there. Yeah, you can speak to it.
Most recently, Bethlehem Haven completed a rehabilitation of their single-room occupancy location in Uptown. Beautiful, beautiful residence for those individuals that are living there. And to complement that, they are, they will be closing soon on a permanent facility, which will be right next door. So if someone kind of has grown out of the single-room occupancy location, they can go into a permanent location, opening a space for someone else who has kind of grown out of maybe a temporary location. And I will say that the URA has been working with Allegheny County and Department of Human Services and they are, there is, there is a lot of strategizing around how to support the homeless population, how we all can kind of chip in to kind of help folks progress through and into permanent housing. And I believe there will be a, an announcement in June for a campaign that DHS has towards this effort. So yes, SROs are extremely important. I believe there's one located downtown here. And the, the folks that live there are important as well, right? And we want to make sure that we can get them into the best living situation, whether it's at an SRO or in a permanent opportunity.
Right. I mean, Wood Street Common is basically a permanent SRO, it's not transitional housing. And there are people who've lived there for 10, 15 years and they're, it's fantastic. But the waitlist for the floor that's for women is something like three years long, right? And so we've added the transitional housing, single-room occupancy at Second Avenue Commons, which is I think 90 rooms or something like that. And then I believe Action Housing, I thought there was some HOF funding for both the YMCA's on the north side and the YM's historic, really historic, beautiful YMCA's too, right? And the Hill District as well. So those will be kind of, I think, adding some more space.
That's correct. I know the one on the north side hopefully will be a project in 2024 or early 2025. We're working through getting that funded now.
And again, so the one that's been, it's been operating downtown since the 80s, I think, or more, that's not transitional housing and permanent housing, that's 256 rooms. Then again, people can just live there forever if they want, right? So again, more of that because, well, we also need, as you pointed out, Ms. Daniels, that only 1% of new construction is three to four bedroom, which is terrible. And so thank you for building that project that we can really, it's like a pressure relief valve for a lot of people if they can just have a roof over their head. And we, we continue to lose those both informal and official SRO rooms. I, I like to say I had a, a, a commercial building right on Liberty Avenue in Bloomfield, right by the Starbucks, right by, on the bus stop, right in the middle. You know, three little neighborhood grocery markets you can walk to where there were 14 men living on their disability monthly checks, right? They were only, their income was something like $350 a month. And they were all living and it was, they were definitely substandard. And those rooms are gone. Yeah. The building was beautifully renovated. It's now a beautiful bookstore that we love on the commercial, on the first floor. But it's like three expensive apartments upstairs. And so those, those rooms are gone. So we need to continue to add back at various price levels. The market in some areas, and I know there's lots in the room who don't want to hear this, is reducing the number of units available in total, right? So when you're flipping that, that's, that home in Lawrenceville from five bedrooms to one single, back to single family and you're flipping that commercial building in Bloomfield from 14 single rooms to two or three expensive apartments, you're reducing the housing stock. So there's, there's a lot of nuance, I think, that we have to, to work through. I don't know if anyone wants to respond and then that's the end of my questions.
I will say is, you know, you made a comment about the workers who, one of the steps to get to the housing that was created because we needed
Like the 1890s?
The 18, and so I'm thinking about how Pittsburgh built its housing stock the first time and we've seen it go through evolutions, going from shanty towns into more, you know, solidified housing stock by way of brick builds and things like that. I think there's another piece on the table here that we have, missing middle housing. We have a workforce. We have people that are, earn too much for a housing voucher, but not enough to be homeowners or to move into at-market rate housing. So there's a below-market space and they are the workers that keep our city going, our nurses and firefighters and police officers, and they are housing-constricted. And I, I, I want to hear and see us think about that housing type because the first time we built housing is because we had an economic boom. The steel mills and the railroads created the need for people to be here and live here. We have new industry and this new industry is very different. And people want to live a little bit differently than they did 30 years ago. And I always feel like Pittsburgh's having a conversation we should have been having a decade ago and we're just starting to have it now. But, you know, I don't, I, and while I, my heart goes out to those who are the most vulnerable in our society, we've got to think about the people who pay the bills and the fact that it's getting very difficult for them to find housing, to raise their families. We're not only losing residents in Pittsburgh to other markets, we're losing them to the county where they can get an affordable house in McKees Rocks or Wilkinsburg or, you know, or McKeesport. And we're not talking about intra-governmental arrangements or we're not talking about annexing parts of the county. I know that's probably sacrilegious to say at this table, but we're not talking about a regional strategy. There is affordable housing. It is not affordable to live in the city of Pittsburgh. So how do we call on our corporate partners, the previous version, the previous magnets built the housing that we see in a lot of these neighborhoods that's becoming this very, you know, elite housing? How can we get people re-engaged so that it's not just the public sector, it's not just private developers, but we also have a workforce impairment imperative here? And maybe they need to be called to the table as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Gross. Now we're coming down to the tail end. We got Councilwoman Strausberger and then Baton cleanup, we'll have Councilwoman Warwick.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, for assembling this
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross.
illustrious panel before us and thanks for making the trip out here. Thank you all for teaching me today. There's been a lot of knowledge building happening today. And I just have two main questions. I guess the first is, I guess I was going to ask the second boss at first, picking up on Dr. Walker's comments about the changing, the changing, not nature of, but like what our, what our housing has looked like and has evolved over the years. And it's about the quality of housing. I mean, for some parcels and for some neighborhoods, like just by renovating or building new, it is an upgrade. But there is a difference even among those, all those new, you know, buildings or multifamily buildings or apartments or co-ops, whatever it is. There's a difference between the high quality and the not-so-high quality. So I guess, you know, when I'm thinking about high-quality construction, I'm thinking about, you know, long-term savings on energy bills because it's energy efficient and, you know, it will, it will remain high-quality 10 years, 20 years into the future. And it's, you know, it's probably a matter of attracting the right developer who will like take the extra care to build that high-quality building. And I'm like, looking at all of you because you all have something to contribute. And
This may be a question more for
Yes, like I want everyone to answer. And perhaps the right policies in place to make, make sure that corners do not have to be cut because the gap financing is there or the whatever is there. So like, can you share a little bit of perspective on that point so that we are building the units and it's high, it's high-quality housing for everybody at various levels of
I'm going to just add this really, really quickly because it's what I do. But I think obviously there's a cost factor there, right? But I think we have to start with recognizing and this is, you know, we, we, as a society, we don't like poor people as a society. And people are making decisions about what people deserve, right? So there are people who are saying, well, you know, they should be happy to get whatever they get. Developers are cutting corners so that they can pocket more of a profit and leaving these very vulnerable families with substandard housing, housing that was built less than a decade ago that's falling down, right? It's falling apart and we know that that is happening in this city because we didn't hold them accountable. You know, it was, oh, thank God, somebody's building affordable housing and we allowed them to cut corners to create housing that eventually, unless somebody goes in and does some upgrades, these families are going to be displaced again. So there is, there has to be accountability, there has to be a mindset shift that happens around how we care for the most vulnerable populations of people. I know that there are developers that cut corners when they know it is going to be predominantly low-income housing because nobody's coming to check it out, nobody cares. You know, we're not holding these folks accountable. People should be satisfied with whatever they get sort of mentality is happening in that space. So I'm glad you asked that question because it's one of the things that I think Tina and, and her crew do really, really well and intentionally is saying that because we know we're building for lower-income and vulnerable populations of families, we know that many of them are enduring substandard housing because that's all they can afford. They're going to be intentional about investing in quality construction and quality materials so that folks are living the life that they deserve. I think that's a shift, you know, I think that it's a classism, it's an elitism, it's a, it's a race, it's all of the isms, right, that, that have to That, that have to be addressed when we're approving development, that we're making sure that quality materials are going to be used and quality construction will happen so that these folks are getting the development that they deserve. Uh, we know that's not happening with all development in this city. So I'm glad you brought that up because it is an issue. How do we hold folks accountable? I don't have an answer for that, but I know it, it has to be something that's considered.
I, I agree with you and our uh, mission is, because what Timmy said, we, we really focus on the fact, and just my personal experience, I grew up in the city. I, I, I grew up in subsidized housing, so I, I, I know what it's like to experience living in areas where you're not proud to be where you are. So um, I make it a point to, a point where our tenant that's going to live in the buildings we build will be proud to stay there. Their children will be proud to stay there. And uh, we do do above-standard materials, granite countertops, you know, just, we, we go above and beyond to make sure that quality builds happen on my developments. And um, it's a personal choice. I don't really know how you can set something in motion where you're going to make sure that happens because it's a character. You, you have to pick the right people to have the right missions behind what they're doing.
Just, just to add, I agree with what everyone's saying, but I do think people are, people are seeing it. Uh, if someone has a building permit, city inspectors go out and inspect the property. Um, if there's a low-income housing tax credit deal, um, there, there are requirements in place from the state and the housing finance agency around energy efficiency, uh, finishes, all these things. So it depends on how well it's being inspected, whether people are paying attention. I think even at the URA, we have an inspection uh, unit that goes out and, and is inspecting what we fund. So I think there could be an opportunity to advance this by improving on, through all the agencies, right? The Housing Authority has to inspect everybody who has a voucher tenant. That unit has to be inspected. So are we, you know, we need to make sure all of the agencies are paying attention and, and there's some standard that, um, you know, we're all inspecting to. So the, but people are seeing it. What are we doing about it, right? If, if they're doing the work properly and getting a permit.
I think there's a seedy underbelly though, and that what's happened is that people are being forced into substandard housing because it is affordable. And they are fearful of the improved product because the improved product may cost a bit more. So they are silent about their living conditions and a lot of these properties are receiving HUD support, HACP support, they're not clearing REACT inspections. And so I think one of the things that we can do is when we start to see those REACT scores or those INSPIRE scores beginning to slip, because they slip precipitously over time, how can we intervene and do something before it becomes an abject crisis? And now you have people who are, one, they're, they're getting ready to lose what's been very affordable housing, housing that, that is affordable the way that it was back in the year 2000, 2005. And now they're going to transition into housing that may be in upgraded quality, but it is going to cost them and their earnings have not kept pace with where even affordable housing has shifted. So I know that we get those REACT scores and we go, oh, it's 70, oh, it's 60, it's 50. You turn around, it's 10 and the contract is being pulled and now we're scrambling. So in addition to thinking about the new product and how solid that is, we have some existing product that we also need to check on from time to time.
Thank you so much. And my, my last question is, um, as we embark on this historic opportunity for a comprehensive plan, which will include comprehensive zoning reform, it should, it is, it's going to. And, you know, we have this sort of one bite at the apple. I think I know the answer to this, but I would just love, in, reframed in this context, what would each of you keep your, like, what I, what, what prize is your eye on? What are you keeping, what would you keep in mind? What would you or what are you, if you're, you know, Pittsburgher, keeping in mind as, as we embark on this process? As an end goal? To continually look for, advocate for, you know, in terms of that comprehensive land use reform?
I can say, just, I, I think we, someone mentioned earlier, um, sub, that there has to kind of potentially be a carrot or a subsidy to support uh, requiring inclusionary zoning or affordable units in all of our developments. And so I would say something that's in my mind is, we, we come to the table annually to, you know, fundraise at the URA, um, we go to the state and other local, um, you know, wherever we can fundraise to support an amount of projects that we can't support now. And so what's on my mind is that while, um, you know, we, we're, we'll definitely be willing to support projects with inclusionary zoning. We have to be thinking about the potential of needing additional funds in the future to be able to provide a subsidy to um, kind of give that extra encouragement or make it possible for developers to include the units in their developments.
I think this goes for comprehensive planning, community planning, everything, but I think really emphasizing engagement and outreach in that process so that you don't have to have every individual project litigated. I think the more buy-in you can get at the community planning process, for one, that's just when you're going to have the most resources to actually bring the most people in. Whereas when a specific project comes up for a hearing, it's, you know, four neighbors who all kind of look the same, who, who show up to, to let you know how they feel and, and in some ways kind of almost get a veto over what the broader community already agreed upon. Uh, and so that doesn't go for, you know, if they're requesting a variance or these kinds of things, but if they're proposing something compliant, I think the place to do the planning is really that comprehensive plan process. And then once everyone's agreed, or you have a majority anyway to agree on it, then if someone shows up and says, I want to build what you said you want me to build, they just get to build it. Uh, it's not negotiated further. Everyone's held to the same standard. I think that's, I frankly been shocked by, in Los Angeles and other cities recently, that have shifted some decision-making to either, um, by right, non-discretionary, objective standards from the more discretionary, you know, veto-ridden uh, approach before. How much that alone has just increased interest in building and permitting? It's, it's like, I knew it mattered, but even I have been like really surprised by how big an impact it's had.
I'm just gonna add something small here. I, I think one of the tools that we're going to have to prepare ourselves for is, is we're going to have to prevent, uh, like Shane said, groups of neighbors and community members using uh, planning as a way to enforce racism, right? Because just screaming that I don't like inclusionary zoning, well, why don't you like it? Do you not like it because you don't want certain people in your community? You don't want low-income or, or other races of people in your community? We have to make sure that we're protecting uh, a solution and not allowing these folks to utilize the planning commission as an enforcement of racism.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Those are all my questions, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and Baton Cleanup. We have uh, my good friend, Councilwoman Warwick.
Thanks. Yeah, I, I, I actually need to run. Um, I'm late for me, but I did just, so just, this has been a very interesting conversation and, um, you know, I've, I've enjoyed hearing from everyone. I'm glad to hear that a combination approach is the best approach, like the three-legged stool, because I do feel like we are doing that in Pittsburgh. I do feel like we're, um, uh, I, I am concerned that there are some folks that are sort of hell-bent on making sure that IZ is not one of those legs and I'm not sure why, because it is a tool like any other. And combined with, uh, you know, upzoning, whatever, you know what I mean? Making it easier to build, making it cheaper to build, um, and in exchange, you know, giving abatements and then in exchange, getting some affordable housing back to do. And I will say that over the past 10 years, I mean, I've seen with my own eyes an abundance of luxury housing being built that has in no way improved affordability in neighborhoods like the South Side or the Strip District or Oakland or whatever, right? Like, so, um, and I, I do want to underscore because I, I know that these are going to be potentially contentious conversations. As a city, and I know you know this, right, at the URA, we have made an enormous investment in affordable housing, enormous, right? With the housing bond and any other, you know, the money that we put toward the URA as a city, as taxpayers. So, so it is not that we are just asking developers to foot the bill. We are, we are all footing the bill, right? We are all doing this um, together. And um, uh, again, inclusionary zoning is a tool. And, and, and developers need, need to chip in and they also need to be better, I think, because to your point about, you know, racism, right? We don't want poor people in our buildings. We don't want poor people in our fancy glass house apartments, right? That's not why we live here. We, we live here to be in like this shicky-micky building. And IZ says no. We can build these communities, but we want these communities to be diverse and that is one tool to ensuring that. And we can give abatements to help, you know, offset the cost. And there are many things that developers can do, specifically taking advantage of vouchers, where they can actually not, not take a haircut, right? Where they can take, work with, with whether it be the Housing Authority or HUD or whatever, take advantage of these um, tools that folks who have been kind of working in like the, the affordable housing world for a long time already know how to do. Well, the, these developers can also learn how to do those things, can hire an admin who can deal with the, the paperwork and whatever to, to get that done. But the question is, do they, do they want that? Is that their vision for their, for their development, for their project? Well, if they want abatements from the city of Pittsburgh, if they want our taxpayer money, if they want breaks and whatever, then they should be building the housing that we need. And um, that is sort of the, you know, that's kind of the carrot approach, I think. I don't know what, um, um, because apart from that, I don't think that we are able to get developers to be, because from what I've seen, when just left to build what they want to build, they will build very expensive luxury one-bedroom units that our families don't need. That's not what we, that's not what the people living in Pittsburgh today need, right? That's great for new people coming in. That's not what the families need who are moving out to Munn Hall or moving to, you know, Monroeville so that they can have a house, right? They, we need these larger units, et cetera. And I also think that we're doing a good job in, in some, in, in our neighborhoods that are not yet exploding, I mean Hazelwood is in my district, so note as a particular example, of sort of prepping for the development that's to come by making sure we've got our CDCs doing good work, you know, buying up sort of these like slumlord properties and locking in those rents at affordability so the people who are living there will be able to stay as new people move in, which is happening. But, you know, all in all, I, I, I'm glad that we're having these conversations. But I also, uh, I, I do sort of, and again, I'm new, so maybe having been at the city for not as long as other folks, I am seeing a lot happening around this topic, whether it's at the URA, whether it's talking to the folks at zoning, whether it's working with our, you know, housing advocates across the city. There is lots of conversation and lots of movement around that and I think that's very positive. And, I mean, even this conversation here at the table. So I think that, you know, hopefully things are looking good. The, the issue of the unhoused, that's a, that's a, that's a trickier situation. And that is, I don't actually, i- in a way, think that that's what we're talking about here, right? That's not like the availability of housing, like can I buy a house, can I rent a house? That's not, that's not the conversation for that population. It's a different, um, I mean, it's, it's still housing, but it's, it's different issues, I think, a lot of the time. Another thing too, uh, and I, and this is something that, you know, Councilwoman Gross and I are looking at, there's going to be um, on Thursday, a press conference about uh, keeping people in their homes, right? Eviction prevention and what the city can be doing uh, to make sure that people have the services they need and the mediation services to work with their landlords and whatever to make sure that they stand their housing. So um, I guess that's it for me. I'm sorry to run. But I, I really do appreciate all of you um, coming and taking the time to talk with us. You know, this is, we talked for hours and hours about this. And I appreciate everyone who came to listen to, um, you know, lots of passionate folks around this topic, so. And thank you, Councilwoman, for hosting.
I know, but I'd like to thank you for, for uh, being a part and thank you for your uh, very thoughtful comments. I really just have, you know, one question, um, because I know we're getting to that time and you also have to get to the airport and get something to eat as well, because I know you didn't get a chance to eat before you came. You know, and but back on the, on the, on the, on the subject of, of inclusionary zoning, you know, something that obviously Councilman Sharlin spoke about. Uh, I know Councilwoman Gross and Councilwoman Warwick, you know, are very strong proponents, you know, of, of inclusionary zoning. I've talked with, with David Batson, Pro Housing about it. And one of my favorite of your 55 recommendations, I think I shared this with Councilwoman Gross, um, early. I'm still early in my tenure, but uh, in, in the, in the very first days, uh, when I got sworn in, you know, was y- your specific um, recommendations around if you're going to do, you know, inclusionary zonings, like some of the cares. Could you just speak with a little bit more elaboration and specificity on those things? Because I know as a body, um, imminently in the very near future, I'm sure we're going to be at this same table, um, debating and going back and forth and sharing ideas about, around inclusionary zoning very soon.
Yeah, yeah, sure. So I think, a- as I say in my book, I think the two headline recommendations are the offsetting bonuses, um, that are sort of making up for the cost of reduced revenues. Yeah, for density, for floor area. And it really does need to be the whole package. If it's, if all you're doing, for example, is we're going to allow more dwelling units per acre, but you don't increase floor area, you don't increase the lot coverage or decrease the setbacks and these kinds of things. What you're really doing is you're like pushing toward smaller units because they have to fit more units into the same envelope. So I think making sure you take a really holistic approach to that is important. And then again, making sure it's, it's voluntary so that when, or, you know, these policies are just hard to design. And also, even if you design a great policy today, market conditions change as we've seen over the past year, year and a half, and what worked before might not work anymore. And so if that is the only pathway available to people and it no longer works, now you're in trouble. So I think those are really the two big things. Beyond that, you know, the, the affordability level, uh, just direct compensation, I think is, is probably the most effective route, but, you know, it has costs, obviously. But the affordability level is really something to consider as well. You know, there's a big difference between an 80% AMI unit and a, and a 30%. And I'm trying to get some data on this in, in Los Angeles because someone has raised a concern that maybe our, our Transit Oriented Communities Program, it's our density bonus program in LA, which has been quite successful. It's produced tens of thousands of units, thousands of which are, are deed-restricted. And many of those are for the extremely low income level, which is 30% of AMI. So we're talking for a, a studio, in a city where a studio in a new market-rate building is over $2,000 a month, this is like $500 a month. And when you get down into that range, I think partly because of racism and classism, but also just like straight-up economics, just operating that unit might cost you $500 a month. And so a developer who builds that project might say, okay, well, I'll, I'll build the unit and deed-restrict it like I'm required to do, and then just not rent it out. Because they're actually, and, and I don't know for sure that this is happening. I'm, I'm very worried about, because we're considering a 15% AMI requirement as an option, which would, you know, be a lower percentage of the total units. But I think just, you know, thinking through those kinds of things, like what could go wrong? What are the incentives of developers and landlords and tenants and, and others? I think all of that is really important to, to take into account.
Yeah. Well, well, thank you. I want to, uh, you know, first, I think, uh, Pro Housing Pittsburgh for partnering and, uh, and bringing you here all the way. Well, at first I thought you were coming from California, but, you know, you were visiting some family in Hawaii, so thank you.
It was a very long, two flights.
Very, very long flight. I want to thank Council President Lavelle, Councilman Sharlin, Councilman Coghill, Councilwoman Gross, Councilwoman Strausberger, Councilwoman Warwick and Councilman Wilson. Gross, Councilwoman Strausberger, Councilwoman Warwick, and Councilman Wilson, who still may be listening. He said he was going to listen on the phone because he had to jump in the car, but unfortunately, he has to leave. And obviously, thank our very esteemed panel. I wish we could do this like every week, you know? We need, you know, something like this, because this issue is so important, you know? Wish you could bring you back every week. But thank you, Shane Phillips, Tammy Thompson, Kiana Wassler, Dr. Diamante Walker, and Tina Daniels for joining us. And having exhausted the business of this post-agenda, this meeting is now adjourned.